Test, one, two, three.
Good evening everyone. It is seven o'clock, actually a little bit past. This meeting is now called to order. Roll call please.
President and accountant.
Here.
Present. Present. President. I believe he's still in the chamber. Um, here, Madam clerk. Let us please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Present. I believe he's still in the chamber. Um, here, Madam clerk. Let us please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Oh, the lady, look at there. At two signs of summertime. Absolutely. So good to see. So pleasant. There are motion for an approval of the minute. Moved by Jenkins-Bale, second by Lewis. Roll call, Madam clerk.
Both sides. Both sides. Aight.
He's there. Uh, both sides, Madam clerk. All right, since there are no public comments regarding any agenda items, we're gonna go on to the consent agenda. Just to be kind of simple, is there anything that any of the trustees would like to have removed? Oh, you give me the packet? I give a heavy package. I give it a heavy bag. Good evening, Mr. Ellis. Well. Brooks, how are you, sir? Same thing.
I would like to motion to approve the, uh, to talk about, uh, F two J.
F. Okay. What, so let's see if you don't mind me asking, what came up since then that you have questions about? Okay, we'll, we'll do it after the talk there. Maybe my, hope I can, hope I can remember that question. Okay. 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 Is that it? That it? Okay, so trustee wanted to just consider this item F two J separately. So is there a motion for the rest of the consent agenda? Moved by Thompson, second by Brooks. Roll call please, Madam clerk. No, we just moving two, uh, just one item. That is item F two J. Yes, Madam.
Okay.
The item about, uh, involving retail strategies. All right, roll call please, Madam clerk.
Both sides. Both sides.
Both sides.
Both sides.
Uh, both sides, Madam clerk. Okey doke. Uh, now we're gonna go to item F two J. Trustee, uh, Folcher.
But I had, um, I had a couple of questions. I, I couldn't see that we're able to cancel this at any time, correct? I didn't see it in the, maybe I passed it. Yeah, yeah, I could. I'm sorry, can you?
Well, is the meeting that you can cancel at any time?
And then it's just, so I know we could cancel it every time, anytime, but I just think for some of these contracts that we should have, um, like a review after six months or something for some of these contracts that we're having, because a lot of times we get into a lot of these contracts, it does not have a review process. So I would like to, like, kind of like, put in that to make sure that we can have a review, like in six months, to see what progress that they're doing and all the different things that they have.
Absolutely. And he also, um, said that in conversations that he had with the mayor and I, and also at the presentation, he will be providing reports to us monthly.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, trustee Thompson.
So this contract is for three years?
It can be yes. And then it has to be revisited, I think, you know, after that.
So we get a shorter term, so you can see how it works?
I can ask him for that.
Okay, because you have, you have other contracts that people, it didn't work out, and you start, so maybe you could have a shorter contract, so you can see how it's going.
Okay. And I think the reasoning behind that, when I spoke with him and I spoke from the, uh, with the mayor from Zion, they said that it takes about two to three years to start bringing businesses in, from the time that you have the conversations to getting everything passed, as far as like, uh, through the plan review and to actually break ground, but that's understood.
O- okay. Just, just a little point of interest. I mean, FYI, if I'm not mistaken, we can cancel at any time as well without any penalties. So that kind of gives us the same leverage. Yeah.
Wasn't shown in the contract, so I wasn't sure. I know it was said, but...
Of the contract?
Uh-huh.
By the client as well. The client may terminate this agreement at any time for any reason.
Okay.
Up to delivery, up to thirty days prior with written notice to the consultant.
Okay. Yeah, may I, may I be recognized?
Uh, I wanted to ask, is this the only company out there like this? Um, did we do RFP?
Uh, we did not. Um, there are a couple of other companies out there, but from the feedback that I did receive and when I, we did meet with a couple of the other companies, they were the most responsive. Um, they did a lot more as far as some of the companies just pretty much handed you data. They didn't give you monthly reports. Um, they're very hands-on. They're gonna come into the town. It's, it's, it was definitely more hands-on than the other individuals, the companies that we talked to. And I can give you the names of the other companies. I don't have them off the top of my head.
They were at refund. They were at refund. When they came to pay, they were coming. It's what's at the pay. Out of all the three ones, it was the best. That was, like, the year he got the one. It had a low.
It had a low conversation fee, um, for, uh, the, uh, the, and it discussed that we did, and Zion, they downed all of the, uh, the, uh, uh. One more thing, May. One more thing, May.
Yes, ma'am.
On this page, that says investment, you find it. It says the total fee for completion of work is due upon execution of the agreement. So it says that means you're gonna pay them fifty thousand or maybe fifty thousand upon execution of the agreement. It says the total fee for completion of work is upon execution of the, the total fee for completion of work is due upon execution of the agreement. Project fee is due within thirty days of, of the end. Um, and then at the bottom it says price, you gotta fifty thousand, so. Once you have this agreement, you have to pay them fifty thousand or maybe fifty thousand?
I believe it's fifty thousand.
But the whole term of the agreement is two years, fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
Definitely is, yeah, it is.
She just read the statement that we can terminate at any time at will.
But if he already paid them the hundred and fifty thousand, then he has to, he would, he would all understand.
We don't pay them the full amount upfront for the whole three years.
That's what it says.
I thought it was fifty thousand per year.
It's the total fee.
Fifty thousand per year, he just responded.
That doesn't answer the question. Because this, 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 um, what I'm looking. It says the total fee for completion of work is due upon execution of the agreement. And then it lists fifty thousand two thousand, so that's the total.
He just said it's fifty thousand per year, you don't pay the whole, but you don't pay the whole one fifty. So if we do this contract after a year, we say we're not satisfied, we provide written notice within thirty days, and that's all the money that we pay them.
But it's not, somebody, somebody.
I can ask to add that verbiage in if that would make you more comfortable, and, and I can have the attorneys review it.
All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Uh, may, have a. No, I thought it didn't make. There motion, the second?
So move.
Move by Lewis. Is there a second? Second by Williams. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis. Vote aye. Trustee Williams. Trustee Jenkins-Bell. Trustee Folcher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote no.
Trustee Brooks. Trustee Jenkins-Bell. Mayor.
Vote yes for economic development. All righty. You got new business, it deals payable, and item F three B.
After.
All right, attached to your papers is listing of general operating expenses for the Village of University Park, third on the twenty eighth of May, twenty twenty five, with twenty four for ten, two thousand twenty five. General fund, three hundred sixty four thousand nine sixty one fifty three. Road and grid, six thousand nine hundred three seventy four. Townsend Fund, two thousand seven seventy four thirty four. University Golf Club, twenty three thousand one one six sixty seven. Captain Flyjack Fund, sixty eight thousand five fifty one, fifty five. Jeff Seven, twenty eight hundred, two thousand eight hundred sixty seventy five. The payroll fund, five thousand nine hundred sixty ninety eight, forty grand, total of four. Seventy one, one hundred thirty five. Is there a motion? Move by Lewis. Second by Jenkins-Bell. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
That's, that's a question.
All right, so thank.
Somebody else, oh, here.
Well, let's see.
So I was looking at the Antero group breakdown, the summary of services. When they have in here, like, Riggo Farm, what exactly are they doing? I thought they're going by and project management was already included in their initial project. So it's like they're, like, charging again to go out there.
Project manag-, you're talking about project management for Antero?
Well, it's not really project manag-, it's just, you know, you look at the breakdown and description of some of the different, um, billable hours. Um, it'd say like, for instance, Riggo Farm, Riggo Farm, Riggo Farm, construction, observation, observations, observation, coordination. So is this a part of the original quote that they submitted, or is this something additional?
No, it's not something additional, it's part of the original quote, but I did ask that they make sure that they are present for the construction, not only of that, but for Sandra, uh, Drive and Blackhawk, because we just don't have the staffing or a person that can go out that has engineering qualifications to make sure that everything's done properly. So I did tell them, I approved that for them to, to do that project management.
And they have in, coming out?
Yes, they have.
Okay, and are we keeping track of the actual, the quote versus what the, the current balance is? So are we, we're not over what was originally stated?
No, but we have submitted an amendment to the, uh, to the grant, um, an affidavit that I had to submit to the CEO, and that was just an extension, because we were thinking that it was gonna be done sometime last year around November, December. And we had some supply chain things as usual, things like that, especially when we had the issue coming up of tariffs. So it has been pushed back, but it is projected to be finished within the next three to four weeks.
Okay, and that's consisted of the, the house?
That's for the administrative building?
Yes. Okay. Um, for the Comcast, I see there is a deal for the cable studio. Why is it always a deal for cable studio?
So we have to keep that on, um, down there. I think Niva can kinda go into more detail, but we are in the process of relocating all of the Comcast equipment so that people can now get the Comcast. It's been a process we've been working on for a little over a year. Um, it's finally set up here in Village Hall, and we are just waiting for the transmitter. We had to get an updated transmitter. All of that equipment that was in the, um, old, uh, studio, it's antiquated. So when we transferred it, a lot of it, we just couldn't keep. And we have been, um, basically segregating that Comcast money, so we were able to utilize that effectively for the cost.
So it, like you said, it has to remain. At that location, yes, yes. For a conspiracy company? Um, I, I mean, I just don't understand why we are paying so much in services. We get one month for forty three thousand, one month for forty nine thousand. These are very, this is very costly. I don't understand why our accounting is this high. We have, for instance, a finance director and some staff accountant or something like that, this would be nowhere near. So it would be way less than what we have charged, being charged under the bill.
So I did add in the budget another accounting tech, because we do need another one. We have a lot more work than in the past years, um, and that person hopefully will be able to do some of the things as it relates to payroll, um, and, and the such. But right now, I think we, we do need to get someone on. We have been interviewing people, um, but they have been cleaning up a lot. We're also catching up on years prior audits, so the bill is a little higher than it normally would be and should be, but I, I appreciate the fact that we don't have lawsuits, arbitration, and we're not correcting things and spending. There was a lot of money that was being spent correcting things, like the IRS audit, that was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and things like that. We had to pay corrected retro to the, uh, police department for some years. So, um, we haven't had those issues moving forward. And I did add on the budget not only a finance director, but a staff accountant. So I'm hoping that within minutes, a couple months, we'll get at least a staff accountant on board so that the bill will go down. I have been, I did assist somewhat with payroll today, um, and it, and it's a lot. But previously, uh, from the history of the village, we did have four staff accountants at one time. I don't think we need four, but we definitely need more than one, so I agree.
Yeah, because this is, just for these two months, it's ninety two thousand dollars, that is absolutely. Two, yeah, this is way too high. Like, for two months, if you calculate that out, for instance, this is ninety two thousand for two months. You have to, to, six times two, that's twelve, I mean, it's just a lot. Ninety two thousand for two months, yes. So, yeah, so this is just way too much, too high. Uh, we definitely need to get a type of finance director, some of the in-house accounting, because I, I just don't understand why we're paying so much for just accounting services. I understand that the work that they're doing, I do see the breakdown of what the billable hours were, it makes sense, but there's, we're spending a lot of money on this service. Um, the next thing was for the tax rebate for the Thomas Pal. Did we ever find that agreement that they're supposed to be getting, not paying any university park tax?
No, I'm still working on that, and I did send email correspondence to, uh, Will County, and we did actually speak with someone who previously worked here from years past. Um, and he as well wasn't sure why, but that's something that's been in place for a really long time now to be made. So I'm still working on that, but that's something that the village has been paying for, I was told, at least ten to fifteen years.
Okay, well, I would like to pour that check. Pour that amount, uh. Yeah. Oh.
One, three?
Thank you.
One, one, three, five, seven.
Or one, three, what is it?
One, one, three, five, seven, two.
And that's, that's where, I'm not sure who the people are, but like, like she said, for years, we've been, they have not been having to pay any university park taxes, not in relation to any other taxing districts, but just for university park. And I know we talked about it before, that we was looking for the actual agreement, where there's something in place that says that they should not, that they should be reimbursed for their, um, taxes. And until then, I don't feel that we should be paying it until we have that contract.
All right, so is that the consensus of the board? Is that the consensus of the board that wants to pour that, or? Yeah, we're pulling checks, we should be voting on it with a consensus. It's the board who wants to pour it.
I mean, I'm okay if, if it's something that a trustee sees that, you know, you know, 'cause it's, it's seven eyes up here, and if one of us sees something that's beneficial, or until, you know, there's a follow-through with the, whether it's the village manager, the lawyer, the mayor, whoever, you know, then we move forward from there. That's just my, that's, just as much.
Well, this was, this, this was brought up last year, so this is a, uh, it was, um, so I guess this company or this person doesn't have to pay university park taxes, and they've been getting, they're paying, and then they get reimbursed by university park every year. And when it came up last year, it was brought up saying, where's the contract to support this? And there was no contract, they couldn't, the understanding stated that they wasn't able to find anything, and they reached out to this individual, and they wasn't able to provide us the contract of the agreement. So no one has the agreement, it's been going on for years and years. I don't think that we should be re- reimbursing the individual back their taxes when everybody else could pay taxes. So unless he has a contract that states that we should be reimbursing him, I don't think we should.
That's an individual landowner. There's approximately three that we pay every year, and it's a partial on a, on a property tax bill. And there was some type of an agreement, whether or not we utilize that space. We took a proportion of his space, and that's why he receives that. But I'm gonna ask for further documentation, I'm still doing. And I have asked staff that was here previously, that is in here now, and current staff, and they weren't aware. They just said that it was paid every year, and it was an agreement that was put in place well over a decade ago. But I will try to keep this information for. I do, I don't know off the top of my head, but I do have the PIN number and the parcel that I can provide to the board.
The, the PIN numbers is right on the.
It's agricultural land.
The PIN numbers is on the paper. So move. Can we, can we wait in case, just in case I had any other thing? I'm still going through, so can we hold off on that? And then I would go back for the board. Um, and then the next thing was for the check for the Leslie Dairy. So last month, I didn't receive, uh, her report on what all she did with HR. I did send an email, I'm not sure, I never got a response, I did send an email asking for that report. If it wasn't sent with the rest of the reports. Um, I just, I have not seen, I do know that we still have the, the exact same positions that's been on deck for, since last year. It's gone, I would, however long she's been in, we've got the same positions that's still not filled. Um, I have not seen any recommendations on how to remediate that situation, or let's do this, or anything like that. I don't know if it has been presented or not. I haven't sent it in any of the reports that she did do previously, but, um, continuously paying for services, when I, I'm not seeing the results. And I still haven't seen the employee handbooks for the board to, to go.
That hadn't been updated since nineteen eighty-three. Um, there were some things that I wanted to add to, um, to the, uh, to the policy manual when I was reviewing it, some things that I just, I wanted to add. I think she did a good job, but there were some other things that I wanted to add. So I'm the holdup, I'm finishing it up, and I just wanna make sure we got out some other pertinent information, um, that's been requested. So that will be forthcoming.
Can we see her draft, her rough draft? We, we will understand if you want to add. I mean, her draft.
Check pull? Yes, I'm asking to have that checked pull until, like I said, I didn't see any report last year, I mean, last month, on the project, the stuff that she worked on, and then, like I said, it's the exact same positions that's out there, pretty much, that since she came on, none of them have been filled. So, and I have not heard anything about recommendations on what we need to do, any suggestions, nothing. So we, we bought in. So, we, we brought in a HR consultant to do some hiring and we still have all these positions that's been. Not to say that, um. It could be, situations to be different things, but, you know, these are the things that I would, we wanted the HR consultant to be working with. So, that's why we're still out of a, a finance director, HR director, um, all the positions that is needed.
So, so let me, okay, let me say this. Um, oh, man, Leslie filled positions for the finance director, she brought in people for, uh. The golf course, she brought in people for, uh, public works and those people didn't work out. And she is still trying to get people in those positions, but we don't have competitive salaries. For people to work in these positions. This is twenty-twenty-five, you can't be giving them a nineteen-seventy-two salary. There's a lot of work in this village and, and, and y'all know that, y'all come up to the village hall, every position where somebody works, it's a lot of work they need to help. She, she filled a position, but she didn't, the person didn't work out at the time. And she's working and she's doing, just, I, I don't know if you, I go up and talk, her and Liz. And it's hard, it's really hard trying to pull people, they have applications, like a hundred and fifty plus applications that they still have to go through. And weed people out, and y'all know people fluff their resumes. Until they get in the door and see what it is and they don't turn out to be what we wanted to do. I, I'm just speaking on that behalf for her, uh, that she has filled and people didn't pan out, so she's, she's still working, doing the job.
And I agree, um, I speak to her pretty regular and I know that she's working and I know that she's searching. I've even forwarded emails, um, resumes that people on next door, who I didn't even know, sent me resumes to ask me about. Our village and are they hiring, cause I have posted it a couple of times. But I know she is working on it, she's working on the union for, uh, ads meetings, which I've given her, we have dialogues about it. So, I know that she's working and doing a great job, so there's no way I would vote to remove this check.
So, for the, as you stated, as for the pay, that's what I'm saying, I have not received any recommendation. In her reports stating, I recommend, based off of the market research, based off of the data. The salary for this position is too low, I'm recommending for this to be increased to this, I have not heard any of that from our HR consultant. And if that's the, if that's the, if that's part of the problem, is that our salaries are too low, which I agree, our salaries are all off. I believe that they should be adjusted, but that is not up to me to do, that's why we have an HR consultant to do, is to present that information to the board to say. Here's my recommendations, I'm having these issues, we're trying to get in some credible or good people. I recommend, based off of looking at the data, the research, that we need to increase this to this. This position needs to be increased to that, this position needs to be increased to that, we need to also bring in another person. So, I haven't seen any of that information in her report and like I said, last month, I didn't see any, see any report. So, I don't know exactly what, uh, the other ones, I, I saw a report, so I can, I can actually say, yes, she should be paid. But I didn't see a report or that I hear anything, so, I understand you all go to the office, I've gone up there most, I've gone up there as well, but I've never seen her there. So, I'm not there all the time, believe me, I barely go, when I have gone up there to ask for it, she wasn't there. So, that's my, that's what I'm saying, so I understand you saying she's doing different things, but. It is the responsibility of our HR consultant to be able to present to us, the board, recommendations on how we can get those people to pu- put into these positions. Because we're gonna continue to have the issue, I think actually right now, I believe, her contract ends in July. And then we're gonna be stuck without an HR person. No HR person, no finance person, so who's gonna start doing these hiring and stuff again, so that's become the problem again, is that we still have. Key positions that are not filled and that affects us, the village.
So respectfully, I'd like to say that when I got here, there was no police chief. When I got here, there was no public works director. You had one person functioning as human resources that was in the union, there was a clerk, that was doing multiple jobs, which is a conflict of interest. Leslie has brought in over fifteen individuals as it relates to the lawn mowing people, that alone is six individuals. There's also three people that are functioning as rangers, there's people that work in the pro shop, there is a chef now. Um, also, I'd like to add, there's been two people that have been hired in public works department. She also has had to facilitate on the backend, although she doesn't deal with the initial, uh, for lateral hires for police. She does do the initial screening on the back, the backend. The other thing is that people don't realize is who, no one's coming here for twenty-five thousand to be an executive assistant, to have to sit in these board meetings at night for three hours. I have consistently had people turn down the pay. Uh, we had someone just last week who applied and he worked at a nonprofit, great guy, he told me he makes eighty thousand and he laughed when he found out that the pay. For the executive liaison was twenty-five thousand. Also, you also, um, have positions for the community liaison position, that's also twenty-five thousand. I have a great individual who's come, is coming from or would like to come from an adjacent municipality. That would like to change, but he makes fifty-eight thousand doing the exact same thing, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and you can look it up publicly. So, he also questioned the twenty-five thousand, so I did put in this budget. Leslie does not control, um, control the money respectfully, she can make recommendations, she has told me and we've tried. So, in this budget that I'm hoping that the board will approve, I am increasing at respectfully asking for an increase for the executive liaison for forty thousand dollars. I'm also asking for an increase for the person who will be performing those two positions as it relates to community, um, projects and community relations. That, that, the, that position be increased also, because no, you can't make, you can't sustain a family, can't sustain a single person off of twenty-five. Also, there is just a shortage period across the board, when I sit and meet with village managers, they say it's just hard, it's hard to get police in. Um, especially you just don't want garbage and that has been, um, a challenge trying to get people that. The board would be proud of, that I would be proud of, that the community would be proud of, that, that quite frankly is qualified and isn't garbage. There have been over a hundred and fifty applications sent in, um, we've reviewed them and unfortunately, a lot of them do not have government experience. And that's problematic, as we've seen when we've hired people, I also don't wanna hire people that are two arms and two legs for public works. When I got here, there was one person that had a CDL, never heard of that. So, when you have those issues, you have increased accidents, that's exposure for lawsuits. So, it is, um, I am being a little pickier than maybe in the past, but I'm trying to get good qualified people for the village that would make the village proud and we just don't want high turnover. I understand what you're saying completely, um, but I do hope that the board as a whole will support these salaries and, um, the requested, uh, revenue increases.
I agree, I mean, like I said, to me, a lot of these salaries are all off. Uh, finance director shouldn't be, what they, what they recommended, that's why I wanted to come to the finance committee meeting, because it should be his figures. I'm just saying, so you look at the review, you look at the market and a lot of these positions, we are way under. And I know you said you added it into the budget, but like I said, I didn't, that's what I kinda see with the HR directors, like. Hey, Leslie, look at the whole market and say, you know what, y'all ain't gonna get anybody in, that's good. This is what you should, this is what's needed, I would like to hear that recommendation, I know it's coming through you through the, the budget. But I would have loved to hear that information, um, months ago. So, we can get people in that are getting those applications, just say you have some good people that you got applications from. Why are we losing these people when we should have already been adjusted these salaries? So, that, that's my whole thing, and if you don't have recommendations, I might see it, but you need to make sure that the people that we're paying for these different things are doing a recommendation. So, that was, that's my stat, that my statement on it, so, thank you.
Yeah, like it was laughable that, uh, someone applied for CDL and I think we're only paying like twenty, hour something. They said, no way, no way, and again, that's not her fault and she's working with the budget that we currently have. So, it's not like she can just come in and jump ship and make all these changes, she's doing the best she can. We don't wanna revolve and door, we don't want people coming in and going right back out, that's no good. It serves no purpose, purpose, we lose money, we're giving out benefits and things and then they don't even stay long enough to chat that shit. We don't need that, we need responsible individuals and from what I can see, Ms. Berry is taking her time, putting the right people in place. And doing the right thing and she works diligently and I have nothing else to say but good things about her.
I'd be recognized there. Yeah, I, I know this is bills payable and, uh, trustee, ultras, you know, wanted to bring up a point and. And then, uh, I appreciate my colleagues across from me making good points as well. Uh, cause it shouldn't be more about, uh, a performance report, doing bills payable. Uh, but I want reality, let's have the reality, cause I, I was one of those trustees. Who sat with Ms. Berry and spoke with her and I'm gonna be honest, uh, Ms. Scott is true. When you came here, yes, you were handed, uh, I'm trying to find a nice word, but you, I'm quite sure. But we, we were in a mess. You're right, it was not, it was, it was, it was pretty messy here. So, I do believe that with. Ms. Berry is that she, uh, was handed something that probably she was not expecting. And so. I think when it comes down to it, that I think, you know, let's be realistic, that. We were asking for her to fix a lot and that was one reason why she did ask for more money. But I, I don't think it changed the workload. You can give a person more money, you can give an officer more money, you can give a firefighter more money, but if they're working in a municipality where that workload is just. You know, can't get the manpower and the personnel, it's not gonna change the results. Uh, what it does is that it makes the results come slower. So, you know, I, I think in, in this, in this case, I think let's at least acknowledge the fact that. All the things that she was handed was quite a bit. Because, let's be honest, when I came in on seventh, twenty-seventeen. I had, went and walked in village hall, one person was doing four jobs. Let's be, let's be honest, and that was the reality of the fiscal. The way the village was rolling when it came to the money. I just say now that if we do have the money and I'm seeing, I'm looking at a piece of paper in front of me when it comes down to salaries. And if we, if this is what we believe, that our employees should be getting and we have the money, then I think that's a board decision we should go into. But when it comes down to, you know, the HR, I think that, that reality we need to come in is that. She was handed more than what she knew that she was gonna handle. And I don't think, um, this is not a chopping session at, uh, Ms. Berry, but I think that, um, I think. I think, I think trustee, trustees are making a good point, really, no matter how it came out of anyone's mouth. Probably need to get a good assessment, which I think this is what we're looking at in front of us, when it came to establishing a salary, I think we need to ask, where are we at this point? Uh, cause I'm gonna be honest, she, she must have been busy, I haven't seen her. I've been up there, she, she's been busy, haven't seen her or, haven't been reaching, so I don't bother her, because I'm gonna be honest. I knew how, I knew the workload she was taking on and I think when I was looking for her, she was at the golf course. You know, so, um, I don't think any person is gonna say the amount of money we're giving them is good enough. So, I just wanna piggyback that, you know, if you see something, I think that, that is a good point that we need to make when it comes talking about. Where are we or what's the status of where we at and, uh, I'm, I am looking at part of it tonight, uh, you're my time there.
Alright, so, trustee folks, you got something else? Okay, uh, that, that's cool.
But I, but I still wanted it pulled, so you can go through the whole thing, if there's, that's the test, you know.
Okay, perfect.
I, I, I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna tend that with still access, so let me go to the next one. Um, it was for the sound barrier. Check number one, one, three, five, eight, six, for fifteen hundred.
That's for the car show.
Right, but. I saw that there was several fifteen hundred, what is the fifteen hundred for?
It's for the sound engineering setup, the stage and all of that for the car show, the, that happens, you know, that we do on Sundays, we just had it this past Sunday.
So, is, this is supposed to be for once a month, fifteen hundred dollars for the stage?
Yes, I believe it is, that's for everything, including the sound engineering and the setup with the speakers and all of that.
Is that something, I, I mean, I don't think.
And that's something I believe we did last year as well.
Right, I, I do remember, but I'm just looking like, I don't think we have to have a stage for the. I mean, if we had a concert, then yeah, but I don't understand why we having a stage with the whole sound and everything just for the DJ to play.
I think it's cause the platform, he can't set up the, you know, just be sitting there on the, out on the gravel with that expensive equipment, but.
I mean, fifteen hundred dollars is a lot, just to say we wanna bring in a stage. Um, and like I said, we're not into having a concert where people are playing a band and if they're singing, it's just the DJ is sitting up on the stage. Playing the music, so, I, I really, I don't approve of it, I don't think it's necessary. And then, uh. Next one is. Uh, you know. You know, when, when I go, I'm gonna go back to the three and then, that was, um. I just have the check, one, one, three, five, eight, six, and I have no idea. Sorry, I think I just have a couple more. Uh, for the, the Cisco Chicago.
That is food service for the golf course.
Right, so my question is, do we have, like, does the golf course have like a particular card, because. I see it looks like, I don't know if this person is using their own personal card, um, but there's a lot of different like credit cards that's being used to make these little food purchases. Does the golf course have like a card that they can use, or it's just one card, or is it just reimbursed into this?
No, it's, it's not reimbursed, it comes out of our, our account, but I'll get that information for you. I have a report for the food and beverage.
Right, I saw the different receipts, it was for, I saw the, the main one was for the Pepsi's, I understand, like the, the Coke, the drinks. But then you have all these different pizza receipts and all these different things like that, those are all different like receipts with all different numbers. So, I mean, I wouldn't want it to be where whoever, the, the caterers or the people that work in food service. Are using their own personal card and then they gotta get reimbursed, that's why I'm asking, is it like one particular card?
Oh, you're speaking of, so there, so when I went out of town on vacation, I told staff and I told the board months in advance that I was gonna be going on vacation. When I went on vacation, they had a situation where they used all the food, they needed food, some ice, it was minor things. So, he paid for it himself, because obviously I wasn't, I didn't have my card floating around, um, and he was reimbursed for that.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but that's not a regular occurrence, but for the Cisco, that is for the food service.
It might have been, maybe that was the wrong one, but that's what, that's the one I was referring to, the one where all these different receipts from different things, so.
Yes, I had him submit the receipts, he called me when I was out of town and I told him that. Um, it would be best if he just paid for it, provided the receipts and showed me what he had purchased and I would reimburse him, so that was what that was for.
And that's a, a one-time thing, is it something?
Yeah, that was his personal money, yes, it was.
So, can we, is it some type of way that we can make sure that doesn't have to happen? Is it something where they can go to the village, cause I know when you're out, I believe, um, you had someone else that was kinda like in charge?
Yeah, that's a one-time thing, I haven't been on vacation in three years, so that, I don't, I seriously doubt that'll happen again.
It's general, you know, a lot of times things.
I'll make sure that it's taken care of.
Like, oh, that, oh, I never know that's gonna happen, but then it happened, you know, so it's just kinda making sure that. I just wouldn't wanna have like the, the people working there pulling out their cards.
No, understood.
Paying for stuff when they shouldn't. Right, I, which I understand, but he had to use his own, his own personal money and cards, I don't think that is necessary for them to do that. Right, you know, I don't, everybody don't have that stuff, so I'm just saying, everybody don't have it, I understand he ran out, but. It should be something set in place, that he come to the village and say, I need these things, and whoever is the person that is, um. There on your behalf can be able to help. That was for that, um, Michael Bay, that was the one, I'm sorry, Cisco West. Okay, and then. For the Whipple, the auditing company? Whipple, Whipple, Whipple.
That's the audit.
Right, so, I see that they are working on twenty twenty-one, I thought we were on a different year.
We're working on twenty-one and twenty-two, I can forward the, uh, the timeline, but those are also old. Some of those are, you know, from the previous, we get billed a little bit behind, but that is what they're working on. Right.
So we're almost at the end of twenty-one.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought we were. Right, there's, here we break on twenty-three. Twenty-two, twenty-three, but I'm saying this is twenty-one, so I thought we were done with twenty-one. Okay, so, I'm done with those, but the two things that I wanted the checks for, if I can probably remember, was the check number. And one, one, three, five, seven, two, and that was for, I don't even. Thomas Powell.
Two.
Three. The, the, the car, the, the. The car show, what is the name of that one? That's the one, um, that, those three, sorry, if we wanna, I don't know, I guess we probably have to do it separately. Let's do them separately.
Do you like to consider them separately, or just remove them period, but it still takes the consensus of the board? And I'll just make a statement, it's not good business to have people do the work without wanna pay them.
I would like to have these considered, um, separately. So the first one was Thomas Powell.
Thomas Powell, what check number is that?
That's a one, one, three, five, seven, two. And that amount is. So I would like to pull check number one, one, three, five, seven, two, and the amount of two thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and six cents. And that's a motion.
And that was to the, for the manager to find out about the. Right, so I motion on that. So, remember the, the documents or whatever.
So, okay, let's get, let's get clarity. For the clerks, make sure, make sure we get this right. Check number one, one, three, five, seven, two, Thomas Powell, two thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars, correct?
Correct, and six cents.
And six cents, and then, one, one, three, five, one, six. We're gonna do individually, okay, is there a motion, not to pay Mr. Powell?
That's, that's the, the motion that put.
Right, motion, and that was to the village manager gets the documents that we're supposed to pay.
So are you making a motion not to pay him, or just making a motion to table it?
I'm, I'm making a motion to pull the, the, the check until we get the information.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Second by Tom, roll call, Madam clerk.
Both now. Both side. Both side.
Both side.
Alright, that's one. Alright. So while we're going through these checks, I just wanna make a, 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 a comment. We've been doing this for a long time here, right, people, doing the bills payable and stuff? Ms. Scott, are you available, like, on Fridays and Mondays and Tuesday mornings? After these agendas I posted, I just can't get it. While we wait till we come to a board meeting, start talking about personnel, how we start talking about people's pay and their checks and quotas. It's not good business, it makes us look like we're inefficient. So I'm just saying, if you have the opportunity, if you got questions regarding anything on bills payable. Let's do it in a professional manner, isn't it, contact the manager before we come to the board meeting. And the second thing is, it's bad to pull people's money when they perform their duties of their obligation. That puts us in great liable harm about these things, so, I'm just wanna put those things out there, what's the next one, trustee folks?
Check number one, one, three, five, seven, nine, that's to Ms. Barry. Amount of five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second, not to pay Ms. Barry?
If, the, the motion is to pull it until we, I see, like I said. So the different thing is the report from last month and the report from this.
So, so that's your motion, is there a second to trustee fortune? Is there a second to trustee fortune's motion? It looks like the motion fails, we're gonna continue to move forward, there's no second to her motion.
And then.
To get paid.
Okay, and then check number one, one, three, five, eight, six.
One, one, three, five, eight, six, which is what trustee fortune.
Well, sound barrier, so, it's not that I want, I don't want the check for, I'm guessing what I'm stating is. I, I just don't, I don't think that we should be doing it any further, so, this is something that. First off, it should be presented to the board, and it wasn't, felt for us to even approve for it to be brought in. So, they did do the service, I'm fine with them getting paid, but I'm saying for any future ones. It needs to come to the board for approval before they do the service. That's the.
Alright.
But isn't that fair, isn't that how it's supposed to go, that it's supposed to come to the, the board for approval?
Well, actually, it's been a budget, like, passed at the beginning of the year, so, and that's some of the things that come out of the budget. Most of the time, actually, you want to get sponsored, like, that's part of the business. And basically, it's a, it's a rise that people set off with the BBS, you know, because of that, that's basically what we're. Saying people that we use for, like, the back to school.
Right, yeah, I understand, but I know back to school, we have actual acts, you know, we have a band, we have people singing and people dancing, so. I understand the reason for it then, but at the, the car show, I do not see it as necessary. I don't see where it's necessary, and I think that's something that should be coming into the board, it might be a budget for it, but. The, the board still should have to approve those things.
So may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So if I present something for the board for the back to school and you don't approve it. What do we do to get the DJ? What do we do then at the last minute, days in advance to have these vendors? Do we announce that we couldn't get that passed?
No, I, that's what I'm saying, it should be presented, back to school was being planned as of right now. So it should be presented to the board, just the same way like I presented program.
Every vendor, the pony ride, we have to present all of that to the board for approval, it's, it's actually in the budget?
No, it's just a line item for e, 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 events, it's not back to school, I'm stating that. These are things that should be brought in and presented to the board. So, just like I have presented the summer events for approval. This is the exact same thing that we should be, that should be presented to the board, so we can say if we would like to have it or not. It should be done ahead of time. It shouldn't be, okay, they could do whatever, it still should be presented, so we make sure we have it, we, everything was approved. So everybody can get paid on time, we don't wait until after the service is done, that's my, that's my statement. Cause we're waiting to after the service is done, and now it's, it's a question. I mean, I, I questioned it, um, last year too at the end, but it was over with. Now, it's the same thing, I just don't feel that we should be spending fifteen hundred dollars for a stage for the DJ to sit on. We've gone plenty places, plenty parks, and DJs are not on stage, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, Mayor, just, is it, um, plausible that we find a cheaper? Stage, I, I, and I think that when it come down to, um. When they come down to, I think, uh, that was. Yeah, I think when we had, um, I think when it came to, I think issues with DJs or something, I think. We found a more reasonable price, but, you know, that was just something that if I could tell, but that would go before the moles, because if I'm not mistaken. That would be under their budget, if, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, but, I agree, but the moles should be coming to the board, telling them, telling us what their programs are for the board to approve it. Just because you have a budget out there, the budget is for events, it's for all events. I'm just stating that they should, so, for this check number, I don't want it pulled, but I'm just stating in for the future. Um, I would like for it to be presented, I think it's an unnecessary thing, so, I think this is something that should be presented to the board. As to say, it's just something that we want.
So that's, I'm, I'm just making sure so you're not, it's no, it's not a mason. Alright. Alright, now I have a motion and a second for the bills payable as amended.
Don't ask that. Uh, is quack environmental, mosquito management, I have not seen a mosquito management. I can't even remember last, not after last year, I have not seen, seen.
I did hear him last year. I didn't look out, but I could hear that.
Can I make a comment, please? Um, they actually started their first treatment on, I have it right here, uh, Wednesday, June eleventh was their first treatment. I honestly, off the top of my head, I can't state that, I, it's something I can look into and then provide information to the board regarding that, but they did come out and make the first treatment on June eleventh.
Where?
I can get the exact location on that as well.
Do they do it like sector by sector, or how do they?
I would hate to give a false answer on that, but all I know is that they did come out, uh, Wednesday, June eleventh, I did receive an email. Uh, prior to them coming out, and then as well as a follow-up email stating that they did come out, I couldn't ask exactly what were the locations, that can apply that to you.
Uh, Mr. Vargas, if you would, if you could just get a schedule, people might wanna be conscious about their dogs, they have to stay out here.
Most definitely.
Are these bills paid already? These bills paid already?
Mayor, those are all checks?
Yes, ma'am.
That, does that include grand checks and other things that need our pertinent attention?
That's everything, that's probably on here and everything that needed to be turned up.
That's where I concerned.
Yeah, that's why I make sure, I be holding, they're gonna be saying, now they get paid, now they ain't. Alright, we got a motion and a second for the bills payable? That's what you mean, as amended. Yes, sir. Move by Brooks. For the bills payable.
Second.
Second by Lewis, roll call, Madam clerk. Trustee Lewis. Trustee Lewis.
Both side.
Both side. Both side.
Both side, Madam clerk, to pay the bills. Item F three B, and I just wanna make this comment prior to, just didn't have an opportunity to go on a cow meeting, but it's a serious deadline, so. Motion authorizing adoption of a resolution of updates of the Cook County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Is there a motion? Move by Lewis. Second by Fortune.
Can somebody explain?
Uh, so this is, if there's a natural disaster within the community, that FEMA and Cook County will help assist. With payment and stuff like that, so if somebody suffers a tornado, or we have a flood, it helps with all that process.
Thank you.
Alright. Roll call, please, Madam clerk.
Both side.
Both side.
Both side, Madam clerk.
Alright. Hello, everyone, I am Danielle McPatten, formerly known as Trustee Danielle McPatten. I brought someone here today to. I brought someone here today to introduce me. My son, Arthur, is that, McPatten, the third. Who was a student at Crete Moni High School that graduated in twenty twenty-three. He went to the University of Illinois in Champaign for the first two years. And this third year, Champaign gave him a five thousand dollar scholarship to go to Japan. He will be leaving on July the first.
What part of Japan? Tokyo.
Alright. He will be leaving July the first, um, and he'll be there for the whole month of July. He'll come back in August, and then he'll be home for the month of August, but then he goes back September twenty twenty-five. And he's there until August of twenty twenty-six. So, he'll be his whole junior year there, so it's gonna be a little lonely for me, so. But, um, I will be giving him fundraiser on this Saturday right here. From four P M. to seven P M. They guys are all room. And I just want him to say something like that.
Yeah, you Arthur sophomore? You going to see a thirty already?
Wow. I just gave an introduction and Japones said, uh, what college I go to, what year I am.
Awesome. Awesome.
That's your major? I'm sorry, that's your major?
Yes, my major is in Japanese and political science.
Well, we, we got some good kids in University Park. I'm telling you now.
So, I just want to thank the Crete Moni High School, everybody in University Park, and help all these years that this way they've done. Just wanted to say.
That's awesome. You, you'll be in my prayers, my friend. You'll be in my prayers. Stephen Tomas.
So, the first thing I want to talk to you is, I'll, I'll deal with my questions later, but. Miss Tom, you said something earlier about sex and F two J, uh, something to that effect, about a three-year contract. But if I'm not mistaken, what you read, saying that the, the total has to be paid upon signing of the contract. Anybody that thinks that that, I heard God bless that, is, is, is out of your mind. But, that you read, uh, because we understand the necessity is that they want upfront payment. So, anybody that's opposing that, you're just, you're just paying attention. That's the first thing. Second thing, that I'm. That I'm gonna do, because they can't survive any kind of support, because they're rich. Third, if I'm looking at this case of here, it is telling you that the university golf course, he pays as a bill, it's twenty-three thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars sixty-seven cents from the date of May twenty-eighth to June twenty-fourth. If I read that right. Because if I'm reading that right, I want to know how much money did that golf course pay there? I've been a resident out here, played at that golf course, it is early days, and across the street at the two nine hole course. I know that golf course doesn't make twenty-three thousand dollars a month. I know this because I told the doctor member there, I see a member at Deer Street. And why are we spending in that month twenty-three thousand dollars for a golf course that on a good day, might get eight people to play golf? I know this, because I go past it every day. I'm there, I'm there every day. I go past. At, at the next statement, Miss Scott, why don't you show us the summary of receipt, to show how much they're making, to justify this twenty-three thousand dollar payment? That's the first.
It's in my board report.
Okay.
It's covered.
Okay. So, and then, as far as Miss Tom, she cared about the mosquitoes, on June eleventh, there wasn't no trucks out here. I noticed that that was the day before I got to be a hippie. So, I know there was no trucks out here, so I don't know who posed, who sent them to play paint, but they didn't stop. And if they did, they did one, and not the bill. So, we paying for the bill, it's not what's true. Another question I got. The month, from May twenty-eighth to June twenty-fourth, he spent seven thousand dollars as a bill to fix the road. Now, I know I live across the street from Miss Tom, across the street from Miss Jenkins, and Mr. Hootier's backyard in my backyard almost there. My court, they came and dumped some ass off his track. They keep the road open. He made potholes down here. So, where, what did he do with the truck?
Mr. Tomas, your three minutes act up.
Okay, but nobody got answered.
Thank, thank you. Conrad. Miss, oh. Did you have something to say, or are you just signing in? Oh, oh, alright, thank you so much. Miss Millie?
Good evening, everybody. Um, just FYI, just want to let, uh, the village of University Park know that there's gonna be a fence around Aqua. Uh, the site is so horrible, uh, as we pass by, our children walk down western, going through the freeway. They have to pass by that site. I'm out all the time, and I have to see it all the time. It hurts my eyes. So, we had a meeting on the eighteen with, uh, the president, Mr. Carter of Aqua, and, uh, the district's second meeting. And he agreed, uh, along with, um, Tracy, I believe she's a, uh, entry or something, uh, to put a fence around Aqua so we don't have to see that horrible sight as we're traveling up to the end. And, uh, I want to thank all that attended the meeting. I really appreciate the trustees that attended. It was a wonderful meeting, and, uh, I'm very, very happy that we had some results, good results. Um, something else want to talk about. As we talk about, and thank you so much, trustee both. Uh, all the wonderful questions that you bring out and pulling checks and stopping payments and things. Fifteen hundred dollars for, uh, uh, stage, each and every time that we have, well, that the mayor has. These, uh, um, car shows, it's utterly ridiculous. And what really hurts is, you didn't do nothing for our children. Nothing. It was on, uh, it was put out that, uh, a report was put out that, um, our children that you, that the board voted no or didn't pass it, or whatever the procrastination is about that, but you didn't do anything for our children. Um, trustee Folcher put out two months, uh, schedule for the month of July and August. That's just long too late, though. I don't understand what's up with that, Miss, uh, Scott and trustees that didn't, uh, vote for it. I don't understand. We talking about for our seniors, for our children. They're not gonna have nothing to do in the month of August, September and August, um, July. I don't understand that.
That is, that is it. Ms. Morgan, thank you so much. That's the three minutes.
Mayor, may I be recognized? May I be recognized?
Yes, trustee.
Uh, first of all, we did not say no. It was tabled for a workshop. The workshop was, was to be set up. It was trustee Folcher's idea. We waited for the workshop. I reached out to trustee Folcher. Would, we don't have, we didn't have a workshop. We do have a month left to get a workshop in place and get things done. Now, the question is, is that we did receive events for the summer. We sure did, but we didn't rece, we didn't rece, receive anything when it came down to safeguards. We needed to know what it was, what it was gonna be, how it was, how much it was gonna cost, all of what wheres and whys that we could have answered in the workshop. Now, we cannot, and we do not have the latitude to afford to be any type of legal ramifications from parents. Some of the things were good ideas. If we would have came together, had this workshop, we could have extracted what we could have used, set it up, and done it. This is not the first year that the children did not have anything to do for the summer. Let that be clear. Also, I set up a baseball organization with one of the other residents, and it was founded here in University Park, in Craig Park. That was one of the things that could have been done with the children, but that, that organization was moved to Crete Moni High School. Moved into the Crete Moni area because the baseball fields are at, they're not where they need to be. I'll say that much. And so, we are, we, we didn't do it, no, but when you set this up, we know that school gets out in June. She had a conversation with the village manager in February. Why weren't there any more conversations after that? Now, I wasn't on the board. I just would join the board May first. But if we would have did this, we would have things for the children to do. We have a pool that is empty, that is abandoned. It's sitting over there. The plural, we asked Aqua for a fence, when we needed to ask Aqua for a pool. Let that be clear. And so, when, when I'm saying these things, I'm saying them to be totally honest. When we're looking at things, we have to look at things from every angle at all times. So, we look, I look at that pool each and every day because I don't live far from it, but Aqua needs to be held accountable for some of the things that they've done for this community, and a fence is, we deserve more than a fence and aesthetics. So, we should have been coming together and also asking Aqua to open up, we, when we did this thing, when we changed our water and moved it from river wa, from well water to river water, we didn't look into, we didn't do a feasibility study at that particular time. And so, what did it do? It made this community sick. We need to have investigations on our health, not offense. Our health, while our children are sick. We need all of these different things from Aqua, more than just a fence. So, they can hide how they're poisoning us and what they're doing to this community. Aqua needs to be held accountable. I'm not standing in front of Aqua. I'm not helping Aqua. I'm going to fight Aqua, and Aqua, without a problem. We could link into Mantino, which is seventeen miles away, to get lake water. That's what we need. We need Michigan lake water. We didn't do our homework. We all dropped the ball. We all became complacent and allowed Aqua to do these things to us. So, my thing is, is this, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna fix it? Aqua can do something for our children. Then we come there and ask them to do something for our children, maybe send our children to a baseball game. They've done everything else. They poisoned us with lead. They poisoned us with nitrates, and we asked for a fence. Are you kidding me? And then, we don't, we have segmented conversations, and the segmented conversations that we have are not being inclusive when it comes down to the community itself. Don't you not think that other residents might have wanted to join this conversation? And, and meet with this president that does not respect this community whatsoever? Or did we show him a fragmented board, which makes him not respect us even more than that? So, this is where I'm at with this. We need to come together. We need to get some things done with our children, and we, it's not too late, and we can get it done. But we have to work together. We have to have inclusivity with it. These are things that need to be done. I supported trustee Folcher's events. All I asked for was clarification and making sure that our children were gonna be safe and things were gonna be decent and in order. That's why I tabled it. I did not say no, and let the record show.
So, Ms., trustee, excuse me, Ms. Morgan, I, trustee, you finished?
I'm done.
I, I do want to respond to one other thing, and it's, it's amazing, but you mind sharing which trustees met with Aqua in the close meeting? You mind sharing that?
Who I'm not sharing, but.
What trustees met with you, with the president of Aqua, to negotiate for a cub over the fence?
Uh, I think that, uh, all of that is just immaterial right now.
I mean, you talk, you talk so proudly about it when it comes to dealing with Aqua.
The facts are, we're getting the fence, uh, this building is getting the fence so that the residents don't have to see the horrible sight. Uh, that's, that's, that's what's important. That's the bottom line. That's the news, the good news I thought I was bringing to, uh, the village of University Park.
You, you know, and, and I'm just gonna say this, that's how certain segments of America divide and conquer communities. Because they can find a, a handful of people who will settle for a little something, saying they got something, and sell the whole community out. Don't you see what you're really doing? You're harming us when you do that, Lord Milton. You are hurting us. You are hurting the community by negotiating.
You wrote the book.
No, I'm a unifier.
You wrote the book.
You divide the community with nonsense.
Every, the, the things that you said went through one ear and out the other, but there's one thing you said that sticks in my, in my head, that you said, trustee Jenkins. And that was, our children, this thing's the first time our children had nothing to do. And you say it was such, uh, such a way, such an attitude, as if so what?
Gave them something to do, and fifty-five thousand dollars was stolen. But Mrs. Millie, let me say this, and let this be clear.
Because our children will live.
Trustee.
Our children will live.
Let it go. With public comments over with. Let's get, let it go. This isn't debate session.
Mayor.
Yes, sir, trustee.
I'm appointing to standing rule, and I ask that if trustees are gonna make comments up here, let's be accurate about it. According to standing rule, and it was, and, and, and you, you among the board, in your day, was the one who adopted it. Let's make something perfectly clear. I didn't know the board was fragmented. I thought we had opinions. We can have opinions, and that's how we is. And I've been up here long enough that every one of us done said it on tape, that we stand next to each other. Number two. Whatever happened with Aqua, I just ask that respectfully, trustee Jenkins, I wasn't notified about no, nothing when it came to Aqua. When I was gone, it was out, and you was with me when you sat, when we sat next to each other. So, I didn't drop no ball. I'm still pissed about it. Because when it comes to number three, you know like I know, this past election, everybody either got cancer, stroke, or Bell Palsy from this lead in the water, and I'm one of them.
And I am too.
See what I'm saying? So, no one have suffered but us, so we have not been compensated about it. But I just think when we start talking about or trying to find that next talking point. I think really, whatever the conversation, Miss Millie, when Miss Millie, Millie said what she said, I don't think we should dive into what trustees, who did this in a fence. No, the question of the fence was, is, 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 the poor boys that look over there, y'all can't cover that up? At least give us that, because it looks horrible over there. And that was something that, it wasn't just Miss Millie, it was things that they brought to the Concerned Citizens Committee. She, they did, and the president, and, excuse me, the chairman, the chairman made it clear. I'm, I'm not sure, I don't think you read that meeting, um, trustee Williams, but yeah, yeah, I don't think she was at that meeting, but.
He came in person?
Did she? She's been, she's been.
No, I thought, oh, I thought you were talking about David Carter.
Oh, no, 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 no. The complaint coming from residents, and at least we can do is, is, is trustees, is try to resolve an issue. It's seven of us up here, seven elected officials, let's try to get something done, and that, I'm just saying, let's please, when it come to it. I didn't know we were fragmented, because we just had, we just left the South Suburban Mayor's Management Gala to all together. And I yield my time.
Alright, thank you. Reports of the mayor, board, and trustees, any reports? Start with, um, man, Scott, you want to go first? I know you said you had to, uh, early morning to get out of there.
Mayor, board, trustee, and those at home, uh, just my board report.
Uh, just my board report, I'm gonna pick out some of the things. I sat in three interviews for employment candidates for Public Works Executive Assistant and Human Resource position. Met with Tom Slattery from I dot to B, the streetscape lighting project along the Cicero Corridor on I fifty. I'm preparing an RFQ, uh, uh, request for quote for engineering services for the streetscape lighting project with a prospective lighting date of November twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. They're gonna be doing like landscaping, planting trees in the center, um, and also lighting that's gonna be contiguous with, uh, Richland Park moving south. Met with Paul from Green Fields, uh, lawn care to discuss summer grass cutting program. Reviewed and proofread the letter, uh, for the newsletter that's gonna be going out to the printer this Friday. Reviewed and called summer interns along with Eva and Bree, the admin assistant in the office. Finished the build out for the summer program and finalized, uh, the arrangements to do. I wanna add, um, I don't know where some people have been, this was actually posted. This has been posted for months. Youth employment, starting June thirtieth. So they will be coming for orientation this coming Thursday. They're gonna be coming here at ninety Town Center. So some of the things that said, um, by residents and, and people sitting up there is just simply not true. Um, I did meet with trustee Fulter. Uh, she asked me what are some of the programs that I was putting together? And it's similar to what I did in another community. We're gonna be having them near different people in different departments. I'm also gonna be taking them to the Tabel Museum, uh, a game and some other things. And also they're gonna be at the golf course. I already arranged that with, um, with, uh, our golf course. And they're gonna be teaching the kids golf and the dynamics of, uh, municipal golf and running the, uh, golf, golf course. So, uh, that's gonna be starting this coming Thursday. Also, um, let me see here. Met with the golf course staff to go over the summer youth golf week for the summer program. Reviewed financials, money received for the golf course and reviewed the approved supplies and upcoming events for the course. Attended the construction kickoff meeting for the Sandra Drive storm and Black Hawk North reconstruction with Antero Engineers, Public Works Director Chris Vargas, and Iroquois paving to discuss the rerouting, the pace, parking, and other specs. We were notified, uh, by Iroquois this past Monday, there was a material delay with some of the precast materials. Nobody was aware of this issue at the time of our reconstruction kickoff meeting, that they still had a couple of pieces left to pass. Iroquois assured us they are working with the manufacturer to procure a schedule of when the material will be available for delivery. Traffic control devices have been on site since this past Monday, but have been set aside with detour signs covered. The roads have been and currently are open to the traffic. We are monitoring this to ensure that the detour, detour signs remain covered as to not impede traffic prior to the start of construction. We will be sending out a notice to update the public, just like we did, to notify them by putting signs on trees and also at residents at home. We will be doing that again, um, to update the public and the board as to the start date, which is now expected soon after the Fourth of July. I wanted to say thank you to the residents for, uh, your patience, and I'm grateful that we will be fixing the street soon. The fiscal year twenty-six draft budget has been posted to the website. Copies are available in village call to the residents, and the board has been provided a copy this evening. Uh, we had a finance committee meeting, uh, last night. We moved it due to seventeenth, which is Thursday. But we do invite the public to come out and participate. We had nobody, uh, from the public to come out. Uh, so it is every third Thursday. Uh, we had a break in the, uh, when we had turnover of the board. So there was this break, but now we're back at it. So we did go over the budget as well as we did through the March financials, uh, with Chris Mayor Bali. I will be providing the board with the housing plan for University Park next week for Board to Do. Um, nothing that needs to be voted on, it's a plan, uh, 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 basically a blueprint for the village. And it's based on, um, the culmination of a grant application that I submitted and ideas that were born out of several meetings with community stakeholders, residents, elected officials, including the mayor and members of the board, outside agency, governor, state, university officials, and the Metropolitan Mayor's pockets, who I would like to thank. Uh, my hope is a collaboration, so, um, with existing stakeholders, also trying to do some other creative measures to get faculty and government state, which resoundingly said that they would like to see housing here, to have student housing, athletic housing. And we're looking to have some other housing, uh, and we have. On June sixteenth, I attended the town hall meeting at Thornwood House to listen to concerns that the residents had with Aqua, uh, regarding Aqua, and this was shortly after the, the incident that recently arose. Mayor Rudez, along with trustee Nina Williams and trustee Jenkins, were present to listen to the constituent concern. I signed up on a ground application for interns from Doug State to assist in the office in summer. Completely funded by reimbursement to the village, which the village, we give the young people an opportunity to experience local government and switch boats up to the great village of residents where they attend school. It's also a benefit for the village to utilize supplemental workforce at no cost. Continue to work, uh, through documents and reviewing correspondence for various litigation and discovery for village. Held meetings and continued conversation with housing developers. We headed ICSC Economic Development Conference regarding the housing development and possible sites for housing with required acreage. Also, I wanted to add that that housing plan is forty pages long, with pictures and graphs, and I really look forward to, uh, passing along. I will be attending the Eastern Will County Freight Mobility Corridor Study this Thursday. The Will County Division of Transportation, DOT, is conducting a transportation mobility corridor study to identify ways to improve freight travel through Eastern Will County due to community concerns regarding growth in the truck traffic from the high density and continuing influx of warehousing, distribution centers, and associated freight activity in the Southland. I also wanted to add, with the, uh, impending airport, third airport that's coming, this is, uh, really necessary conversation. Um, I also wanted to provide an update, which is in my board report. The village has generated a hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents. So, uh, there was a comment made about the twenty-some dollars that was spent. That has to do with the lease of golf equipment, employee payroll, also ice machine, carpet, HVAC. So there are a lot of things that go into that. Like I said, within, uh, between May first and June thirtieth, the village has generated a hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents. The breakdown is as follows. The clubhouse venue rental, uh, three thousand, seven hundred and eighty extra. Food and beverage, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Green feed, ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. The pro shop sales are twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty cents. In closing, I would like to extend my deepest condolences to trustee Nina Williams on the passing of, uh, her brother, I think he deserved it. And I would like to extend my deepest condolences and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Good report, Mr. Scott. Need a glass of water. I got, I gotta, got a quick question. So with our summer employment, are, with the summer employment, are some of the students, some of our young students, have the opportunity to work for some of the department? Like the fire department, the police department, the public work? How's that going? So that, that, well, thank you, that's good, that's our young people. Because I think that, um, Aqua worked in what department last year? Had a good experience, and so it gives them the opportunity to create these firefighters and the whole opportunity. All right, I'm finished with it. Who's next? Yeah. This, all I can say to that is. Uh, Chris, Mr. Mayor Bella?
Those website. Uh, we prepared, uh, FY twenty-six budget, which is also posted on the those website. So what you have in front of you is all of the changes from the hanging thing of last night. Uh, we went to golf course and built up the kind of the clothes that are there. Um, processed payment for reimbursement, laser vendors and fifth seven. We also worked with investment of the village's funds. We, on average, every month, the those, uh, a hundred and seventy-six thousand a month in interest, since we transferred the cash to buy those. One million, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we worked on the FY twenty-five stretch report. I will do a little check over, uh, for March. Village General Fund, as of March thirty-first, we had revenue of sixteen, oh, hundred and ninety-seven thousand. At the tax, that's holding revenue for General Fund, one one, three hundred and forty thousand. Fender's for the General Fund, seventeen, uh, fourteen, oh, six hundred and thirteen thousand. For a net surplus, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and six thousand. Special Revenue Fund, we had revenue of six hundred and six thousand, with expenses of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. A net surplus of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Capital projects, we're going to tip. We have revenue of eleven million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, with expenses of nine million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Oh, sorry. Revenue with thirteen million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, with expenses of nine million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. For a net surplus of three million, eight hundred and seventy-five.
So you said thirteen?
Thirteen million in revenue.
And then what were those nine million dollars?
That was the expense.
What were?
Fifth are reimbursed, so you guys are on your fifth obligation. For growing other, uh, seven, uh, fifth, five, your obligation to reimburse, uh, the vendors seventy-five percent of what they pay for profit tax. Relate to five.
Give me that broken down.
By vendor?
Yeah.
Good evening, board, trustees, mayor, and residents. Last month, we ended, uh, with a hundred and seventy-one calls for service, which was the busiest, uh, that we've been. We've also had to have mutually come in from surrounding towns to kind of help us with our EMS call. Uh, so we are getting busier with the, uh, ambulance. Uh, we met with the ambulance manufacturer on the ambulance that was ordered. We finalized everything on it, and it's going hopefully to production for next month, so. Met with LCC, and that's our dispatch center. And with the radios that we bought, we are now one hundred percent compliant with the, uh, P twenty-five migration, the digital. They're all installed now. This doesn't affect University Park, but the next few weeks, street is gonna be, uh, posing a change street over by Waltz. It's gonna be like seventy-five weeks. So Exchange by Waltz will be shut down, and that's gonna be some infrastructure for, uh, Ahmed, uh, gas and stuff. Yeah, they've been down by Burrville, but they're gonna be moving to the, uh, west side of, uh, Exchange three ninety-four. And it's gonna be a very large lawn project. And at Burrville, they're also gonna be putting in a roundabout.
Is that right? Yep. Thank you, chief. Chief Mitchell?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, village board, citizens, appreciate, um, thanks for having us. Uh, the University Park Police Department in May answered seven hundred and ninety-four calls for service. Vast majority of it was, um, quality of life issues. However, we did, uh, take, we did have twenty-nine reported accidents with ten verified. Uh, for the month of May, we had four calls of shots fired, mostly over, uh, near the western, uh, part of the town. And the police department took possession of our brand new radar trailer and radar signs purchased with funds donated by IHI Power. That should help us, um, address, uh, the issues of speeding and traffic control throughout the village. I'll be meeting with, uh, the Public Works Director and the village manager as to where to place the, um, the radar signs. Um, police department would like to, uh, again, extend our condolences to trustee Williams. Also, we would like to, um, really tell our citizens to make sure that it's the summertime. People are out more and more during the summer and late at night. Make sure we lock doors on our homes and cars. Do not leave valuables in sight in your cars or outside. Um, police department still has a couple of wheel locks for our Hyundai's and, and Kia's. We're also with the number of accidents that we've had. We're asking residents and, uh, visitors to the, uh, Village of University Park to slow down when driving. Look always when traversing an intersection. We want to remind everyone, our signs are out, fireworks are illegal. There's seven hundred and fifty dollars for each incident. So, uh, unless you got seven hundred and fifty dollars to, uh, uh, to spend, don't do it. We reminded our residents, uh, on, uh, blocks, no parking two AM to six AM. We're actively enforcing that. And starting July first, we will be, uh, conducting our sweeps for our village stickers. So if you haven't gotten them already, please come into the village hall and purchase your village stickers. Because we will be, um, conducting sweeps, uh, for village sticker enforcement. Uh, also, I remind everyone, please come on out. We have a monthly chat with the chief. It'll be the fourth Friday of this month. Uh, we have National Night Out coming out, that exact date we will, uh, post. And then, of course, remind everyone, if they wanna donate to shop for the cop, that's coming up in December. Uh, please, you know, donate some money, five dollars, two dollars, whatever. It helps, uh, for us to provide a decent Christmas for some deserving young person. And that ends my report.
Thank you, chief. Uh, I got a question for the fire chief. Springtime, I mean, summertime is hot, it's been really, really dry. Any suggestions for people barbecuing and deep frying and stuff like that? Because it's very hazardous right now. I won't do it on my day, so any hints for our residents? Any suggestions?
You basically wanna keep your grills away from any kind of structure. Uh, with the wind, you don't want to, uh, pick up and start pushing ash onto your house or on top of the, uh. Uh, you wanna keep grills and fires away from any dry, uh, brush. You don't want to start that on fire either. And then we also do have an ordinance that you're not supposed to have any kind of open warning. Uh, we've had a few incidents where residents are burning stuff. We've also had it out in industrial park. So just a reminder, you're not supposed to burn within the usual limits. Get the fine.
All right, well, thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Chris, target?
Good evening, mayor, board, and residents. Um, Public Works has begun cleaning all the top lots of the three and weeds, and we'll continue to monitor them. Uh, we continue branch removal every Monday and patching every Thursday, as well as mowing all our village-owned fields. We continue working on the free removal cleanup on Nacky Road. All Public Works employees have successfully completed their flagger training. We have hired two new employees, and they are scheduled to start on July first. Uh, Public Works has removed and replaced the old Regal Farm sign on Western Avenue in Olmsted. Uh, we worked tirelessly to distribute all notices regarding Aqua's water crisis to all the village residents. Uh, we are scheduled to begin metro lot enhancements this upcoming week. I've met with Boss Electric regarding the repair of the golf course, marquee sign that was successfully completed, as well as, uh, repair to a streetlight that was east of that marquee sign. I also met with Johnson Controls regarding fire panels at both Regal Farm and the Cable Studio. And I also had an onsite meeting with Antero and Iroquois regarding the construction of Sandra Drive, as well as posting construction notices throughout this run of construction site. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, man. Thanks to you guys, stay hyped, break it up, get it off the top. Appreciate all you do, man. Brooke, you got anything tonight?
All right, good evening, uh, general public, those present. Um, about four things I'm gonna speak on tonight. Number one, um, uh, earlier this month, we had the anniversary of the Mills on Wheels. Uh, it was hosted at New Hope Church. Um, we had Jennifer from Will County, myself, um, young man from Piattone, the school board, politicians that were there. Trustee Thompson was there, uh, and quite a few University Park residents for the anniversary. I just asked that, you know, take advantage of the service. Um, those people are doing great things when it comes to the Mills on Wheels. Um, uh, they come to your door, especially those seniors. Um, uh, they come to your door, especially those seniors can't walk anymore, a lot of things they can't do. Um, it does put a smile on their face. Um, the next one would be, um, attended a number of events, um, that you all, from taxpayers, you pay for. And so I made sure I was there, especially this month. Very proud to see the, uh, what was the M Y T P? Yeah, the gala, that was a nice gala to attend. Um, just Friday, we were at the South Suburban Mayor's Management, uh, Gala, and so it was great to sit among the colleagues. And, um, of course, as you know, with me, you know, I like to crack jokes, but also I have to be careful what I eat, because somebody keeps telling Karen about my pie. Gotta have sweets, so I gotta watch my sweets. Um, um, then next, um, I have, so, uh, speaking of Karen Brooks, um, just wanna say congratulations to my wife, who was just appointed to the Library Board. So, um, I would like to thank those. Trust me, she is not no politician, y'all know her. She about, what's that, boots on, it's about a boot somewhere? Lion dancing, sorry babe, telling on you. Uh, but y'all know she, she, she's into dance and everything, but I just wanna, uh, thank the community, because again, um, I found my voice. I know my voice in this community. Um, I was a lot of, a lot of the kids who, I was their coach, I can't believe these guys are now twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven years old. And, you know, it makes me, you know, when I looked and I was shaving the, shaving the beard, I just brought it all the way down last night, I was like, all this gray. But it feels good when they still call you coach. In this election, I have to say that, and I was just moved by the unity of this community, especially when I meet someone who I used to coach, and they, they ask them, hey, Coach, are you still gonna coach? Because, you know, I want you to take care of my son. You know, that's, that's very touching, but then also the embracement of the community to my wife. So, um, that's one of the blessings that when it comes from God, that, uh, when he speaks and when he has something for you, and like I said, once again, she's not a politician, but she has been doing a lot of things since, uh, for those who've been around in the school system, Mr. O'Neil, back in nineteen ninety-five in the Thornton Township District. And Mr. O'Neil, um, a very powerful man to work under when it comes to being a principal, and he even helped elevate my game as I worked with him to try to get kids right and hard. So that's where we came from. She came from that region, I came from that region, and who says that your work is only limited? And so when the opportunity came, and I told her, I said, you know what, babe, what's wrong? You can do the, what's wrong with being on the Library Board? You know, and so what was even great was the people who are supporting her to do it. So I would like to say thank you to all of those, um, who pushed it forward. And then lastly, I just wanna make this, uh, this point. When I did my testimony, uh, for those who remember when I came back from being sick, I made a statement. Actually, when I look at the whole tape, thirteen minutes of it, I was saying things that sometimes when I get to talking and feel like I'm daydreaming, but it's, I, I know what I'm saying. In that day, and I, I just had a discussion with my mother, and she said, you know, son, you probably was prophesizing a lot of things, and, and one of it that I was talking about was gossip. And I'm very serious about this gossip. The reason why I say it is that sometime we get to title politician or get elected, we feel it's okay to talk about the other person and slander their name or say bad things, just because it's okay to do it. It's not right for me to sit up here and start saying something wrong about any of my colleagues, the mayor, fellow trustees, that's wrong, because once you're not here no more, that still sticks with you. But then on top of it, how do you think you're gonna get to heaven if you'd obtained it someone else's or hurt someone else's lifestyle? So I say that because, you know, for those right after the election, if you tried to reach out to me for about a month or so, I did have to rest, because my blood pressure, everything was high, and I was working, and it had nothing to do with the pressure, the stress of the election. But then I just wanna make a point that I had certain individuals out there saying, oh, Trustee Brooks, oh, he don't care about you, election over, he, he gone, that's all he wanted was your vote, and it's out. I heard it with my own ears, just like I heard a lot of things when I was sick. I was told, yeah, he had a mental breakdown and a stroke, but not one time did that person come to my door and ring my doorbell. So that's how dangerous it is when we get to talking. And so, uh, just like I just heard the village manager had to make a correction on something she hears, and sometime I tell them, stop chasing it, or when I hear my colleagues, when they try to make correctional stuff they hear, I said, leave it alone. Even when Sonia sat next to me, sometime I say, Sonia, leave it alone, because at the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, the truth will always come out. If I know you and you know me, you know my heart just like I know yours. And if you've been out here walking in the streets campaigning and working hard, these people will learn that you care about the community. So what I say in yielding my time is, enjoy the Fourth of July as it come up, but also at the same time, let me say something to you. No one character deserves to be torn down. Mine was torn down, but I'm still smiling, because the people spoke, they said, we know you. And it's not fair whether you're an employee or a politician in the Village University Park, nobody character deserved to be torn down. Because at the end, and I think I prophesized it, it's gonna be you, it's gonna be you having that conversation with the Father. That's if you're a believer. You're not a believer, I don't know about that one, I wanna be on the side of the Lord. So in saying that, I wanna say, enjoy the holidays on the Fourth of July. It is very dry, it's supposed to get rain if I'm not mistaken, but it still don't give excuse, it's supposed to rain all week after today, it's supposed to rain all week, it's supposed to, but let's please be careful. Take care of each other and yourself, is the words I leave you until we meet again. I yield my time.
You, uh, Trustee Jenkins-Bale?
Uh, last night was our first, uh, finance meeting, and it was astounding. Um, the budget is really well put together. We do have to open this up to the community to make sure that they see every, they need, they need this, and transparency and accountability. That is what I feel. The village is in a decent place right now, but we're not where we want to be, we're on our way. And so we have to really watch our, our spending, and some of the things that we may want, we're not gonna get, you know, when it comes down to different programs and different things of that nature. But we are gonna take care of our children. Now, I'm gonna address the children, anybody that knows and knows how much I love this village, they know how much I've paid into the children in this village. My first term of trustee, every dollar that this village gave me, and twelve thousand dollars of it, went and recirculated back to the children. I'm also paying for the children to go to the Lions as well. So these are things that I support, I am about the children, about the seniors, and always have been, and always will be. And as of the summer programming, we do need to sit down and do something for the children this summer. I am seeing them wand- wander around and do the things that they shouldn't be doing, but we have to come together and get this done. And we have time to at least run out the month of July, as well as summer of August, before the children go back to school. I would like to address the election. The election, when the people voted for me and asked me to be a trustee again, I was very humbled, humbled by it and thankful for it. And I pledged to do what I can for this community. I am not going to take sides, that is not what I'm here for. I'm here for the side of the Village of University Park, and I'm going to do my best, to do my best. Now, I do know that our, our village manager is working extremely hard to make sure that things are well in the village. We don't want it, they said to me, one thing that sticks out the most is corruption needs help. That's the saying that goes in University Park, corruption needs help. But corruption, it does need help, but corruption has to be acknowledged on every level. It can't be just acknowledged, not acknowledged when it's your friends. Corruption needs help, but we are not gonna allow corruption to keep coming into this community, and things had to be done to ensure that the community has safeguards put in place. Now that I'm seeing all of the things that have happened, I'm on the inside track of some things. I'm shocked at what I'm seeing, I'm in disbelief of what I'm seeing, and I prom- I promote transparency and accountability. I cannot come out and discredit people, but what the village needs to do is open their books and let people see what was going on in this community. And they all have a different take on what's going on, and they'll see that it's, everything is not as it seems. But we are on the right track, I repeat, with the village. And have a wonderful July, Fourth of July, I hope it doesn't rain. I'll be in Indiana popping fireworks with my, with my children, my grandchildren, because it's legal, and so I will be there having a wonderful time, but don't burn my house down if you guys do pop firecrackers, leave Monterey Court out of it, me and Ms. Joel will be very happy about that, so, and watch out for the animals as well, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Trustee. Trustee Folcher?
Good evening, Board and Residents. I would like to just say thank you all for coming out, raising to the audience. Um, and then I would like to also thank those that, uh, was a part of me putting together the summer programs. Um, I had a burden on my heart to make sure that something was brought for here at University Park, and that's exactly what I did. So I said I wanna do it, I'm gonna invest my time, my energy, my kid's summer, to make sure things is gonna happen here. Um, so that's why I decided in February to start working with it, you know, when I met with the village manager, and we went over some different things, and I gave my ideas, she gave her ideas. Uh, but I said, you know what, I understand that you are working on a lot of stuff, I am gonna do all the legwork. And that's exactly what I said, I would do all the legwork, I'm not gonna put this on you, because this is something that I wanted to bring, because not only just for the kids, I want it for the seniors, I want for everybody to at least have something to do. And it's not just something to do, it's also to make sure that they're utilizing our facilities, and it's that they're not just being stagnant and that staying still. So Ninety Township would be active, the golf course would be active, our parks would be in play, um, it's just making sure, and then those community partners. So I just wanted to make sure that something is gonna be consented. I, I reached out to, like I said, the village manager in February, I reached out to the Board and, uh, Residents in March, and then I continued to work, and that's exactly what I did. And then, unbeknownst to the different things that people were going on vacation, and we had, it was a, uh, event that some of the trustees and the mayor had went to, which delayed a little bit of the process, but I wanted to make sure, and that's why I reached out to the mayor to say, I want this to be put onto the agenda, so all residents and the Board would be able to hear, comment, make suggestions, and do whatever, and also to add, because it's, what I presented was not gonna be the only thing. What I presented was just a small part, I wanted everybody else to put in their part as well. But there, those are the things that I was gonna make sure that I was gonna commit to and make sure that they were gonna be there. And anybody that knows me, know that whatever I put, I say I'm gonna do, I do. Whenever I say I'm gonna show up, I show up. I have been doing it since I've been here. So, um, that's exactly what I did. So it being presented, had the opportunity for the Board, the Residents to give their comments and opinions, add any different things, and then it was moved on to the, the next agenda. During that time period, those two weeks, I made sure that the things that they had brought up, as for confirming the dates and the times, and whatever else that needed to be confirmed, I made sure that everything was confirmed before the next board meeting. Also, made, tried to make the effort to reach out to the village manager to go over all the things that was presented, but that did not occur. Uh, so we had the board meeting, it was presented, and it was tabled, to be go to a workshop. Now, I didn't vote for it to be tabled, or to, to, or to go to a workshop, but I do know a workshop takes time. We've been saying we're gonna have a workshop on multiple things, and we have not had one workshop yet. So I knew, like I stated, that the summer was gonna start in a couple of weeks, we need to have this done now. It could be several things that could have been done. So a workshop takes time, because not only do you have to plan for a workshop, as in schedule it, it has to get onto the agenda to be talked about, and then it has to be put back on the agenda to be voted on a year. So the process is a, is a, is a, is a longer process. So those that wanted to have a workshop, should have took the effort to make it happen. It's not on me, I didn't want a workshop, I already had all my stuff together. So if you wanted a workshop, then it's up to them to put it together. After that board meeting, once it was voted down, I went and made sure that all the different community partners that was gonna be in play, I do thank all of them. I thank all the volunteers that was willing to volunteer, I thank those that was willing to donate, I thank all those that was a part of the plan, where not only was it just bringing, it did the community together, but it was bringing our partners together as well, the schools, the churches. So I, I reached out to all of them, and all of them were willing to support and had committed to doing those different things. But after that meeting, what I did was make sure that I reached out to them and let them know to cancel whatever plans and dates that I had set forward. And, which, which is fine, because I'm not gonna hold them on to nothing, I'm not gonna make them do anything, or stay with something that is not gonna be approved. So all of that stuff was canceled, and then my schedule got full. So as a time for summer, you did some stuff, there's no time for me this year anymore. My, my schedule is done, and my, my schedule is now back to focusing on just my children and my events, even though every event that I go to, I'm always bringing somebody else's kids with me, because I make sure that we're supporting all the events, not just here, I support the events in Moni, I support, I'd have been in Homewood, I'd have been in the South Hall, I go to all the communities and support all their events, because I wanna make sure that not just my children are being exposed to different things, that all the children are being exposed to different things. So I just wanted to make sure that, say thank you to all of those that was willing to support, those that's willing to volunteer, and those that's willing to help. Um, hopefully something else occurs by somebody else, because it's not gonna be on me. Uh, like I said, my schedule is full, so, um, I hope something does get put out there, things that the village manager stated as for working with the golf course for them, different things. Look, this is not a competition, I am not in competition with any of my trustees, I'm in, I'm trying to, we're not really working together. I understand why everybody makes it feel like it's a competition, I'm not competing against anybody, and nobody should be competing against me. We're here working together, trying to bring something to the entire village, and to make sure that what we're presenting is positive, and that people can say, yes, I did do something here in University Park. I did spend my summer doing this here in University Park. I would have loved to be able to say that during the June tenth, this, this past week, to say that I was, I did something here in University Park, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to. I, I went to other communities to do something for June tenth event. So that, that's what it's all about, it's not about a competition, it's not about the accolades on anybody else, because if something happens positive in here in University Park, it reflects on the entire community, it reflects on the entire Board. The mayor, as a matter of fact, I say to, to the mayor, actually, you're gonna get the highest praise, because everybody always go to and say, oh, thank you, Mayor, this is what we're doing. You know, even though our community trustees, it could be everybody else that's doing it, but because that's the figure here in the, in the community, it's gonna always go back to the mayor, all the good and all the bad. The trustees see it too, but it's, it's gonna fall back The trustees see it too, but it's, it's gonna fall back on that particular person. So, all that good that would have been, that could have been, it's not gonna be giving that praise to them anymore, because it's not gonna happen. So, like I said, I, I, I do wish that whatever happens, that our kids, seniors, and everybody else is able to enjoy University Park. Um, I also just wanted to say as for today, tonight, the, the Broncos baseball team, the Coach David Sevier, his team, they are playing a championship game as we speak. Um, I don't know these both, I've been waiting to see them both. Hopefully, they win. So, I'm wishing them luck with the team, the Crete Moni University Park baseball. This is the Bronco level and they are playing a championship. They have a good, pretty good team. So, I'm looking forward for a win. I wanted to thank you all. I wish you all a, a well, safe and happy and fun Fourth of July weekend. And I'll look, I'll, I'll see you next time.
So much, uh, trustee Donna Folcher. Trustee Gina Williams?
Good evening, everyone. Um, my report won't be that long, because as you know, I did lose my brother and I thank everyone for their condolences, cards, appearance at the homecoming. Um, I'm still, of course, in grieve, grieve mode. Um, I did meet one day last week, uh, Pat Callaway, who had been coming to the meetings from the Thornwood House, called me and her and the manager over there, a lady named Nicole, wanted to know if I would make an appearance over there, because there were a lot of, um, residents that had a lot of questions about Aqua. And who better to ask than me, the champion for Aqua? So, I agreed I would come out there that Monday at one o'clock. After I got the call with her, I called village manager Scott to let her know that these people wanted to meet with me. Can we put an agenda? What, what can we do so that we can have, uh, accurate meeting with them? So, she agreed that she would come. Myself, the mayor, Scott, and Sonia Jenkins met with those people. It was a good forty or more people. And was, it was quite a few, because they kept coming down, coming down. And we got a lot done. We talked about the, they were concerned about they weren't getting any water delivery. These are handicapped people, seniors, a lot of them couldn't make it to the shed to pick up their water. So, there, there were complaints about that. And then there were complaints about, um, the effects it has on their skin. A lot of people were saying the water's causing them to break out. At the end of the day, we talked and what we decided we needed to do is more coverage. We want to get in touch with other communities that are getting Aqua and have the same complaints this week, because we know their strength in numbers. So, we wanna collaborate and get these communities together, get their mayor, their public officials, and make some noise, do something about it. Let's not just sit here. The mayor mentioned putting, um, like that thermometer thing they have out when it's, um, United Way. We wanna make signs, we wanna put them in people's yards. Aqua has to go. We're not trying to, um, necessarily negotiate with him if he doesn't. This man has yet to show his face in our community. So, he can meet with you on the phone, but he can't come in person. But yet, when Hawthorne Woods had a problem, he was in the middle of the floor with a crowd of people around him. But in your black and brown communities, I can give you a fence, but I can't give you what you need. So, I'm not hating on the fence fire. That's good, great. Make the place look good, but make us feel good. Give us the water without the poison in it. That's our biggest concern, not about shielding a construction site. Construction sites look like construction sites. I've never seen a construction site that was neat and clean. And I worked downtown for over thirty something years. My husband was in construction. If I went over there to visit him on lunch, it looked like construction. Boulders, the whole thing. So, yeah, that's good that we're getting a fence around the, the site. But let's keep working towards exposing Aqua like trustee Brooks said, a stroke. All these people have had ailment since this has occurred. It has not stopped. And we're still sitting here acting like, oh, well, you know, we can't do no better than this, so let's just keep on shuffling up the buffalo and keep on doing what we're doing. Hecky no. We're not gonna keep doing that. We gonna keep speaking up and speaking out until someone hears us. Had a gentleman call today, because he got approved, he was in the TAP program, his water is bad. And now he keeps calling and he's not getting any answer. So, I had to call TAP and I had to call Aqua. And Aqua was supposed to direct me to a higher up, which is Kelly. I've talked to her a dozen times. She didn't get back with me today, but I'm gonna be on that call first thing tomorrow morning, God willing. I'm not giving up. I'm not gonna keep making excuses. I think there is a way for us to get water that works in our community. And then I agree with trustee Brooks on a number of things as far as the election. I didn't know I was this popular, but I heard my name was being mentioned all over the place. People were letting me hear the ring thing. Oh, yeah, she sold us out. She did this, she did that. I'm like, wow, you gotta tear down my house to build joy? Unacceptable. I've always worked hard in this community. It ain't a person in this room that can say I haven't. And when it comes to Aqua, I've been on it from day one and I'm never gonna stop until God says different. But to talk about me and say I sold us out and, oh, yeah, that TAP program, look, that was the consent order. That was the consent order. And whether it was a million dollars or nine hundred, we still are trying to get things done and get pipes replaced. So, I'm never gonna stop doing that. But I don't appreciate the naysayers and the people that went around talking about me instead of talking about their self and what they did. That wasn't happening. It was Gina, Gina, Gina. I'm like, wow, really? And as for the program, Donna, I was one hundred percent for you. I want our children to have something. I just wanna make it sure that we're doing it right and that they are safeguarded as far as making sure the volunteers, that we don't have any type of suits against us. If they're serving ice cream, we gotta make sure that it's okay, because kids will run up here and say, yeah, I can have it. I worked at, uh, Cornerstone Christian School. I was the PM kindergarten teacher. I know how kids will like. But when I look at the sheet, I can see, oh, no, you can't have it. I, I can't, I, 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 they, no, peanuts is in ice cream. Butter pecan. So, we have to make sure when it comes to children, that they're safe. And I hope that we can still bring programs to the community and for the seniors. We shouldn't, uh, forget about them. Those things can still work. So, I hope that we can do that. I hope the Nickerson Foundation, who are brought out here, that they'll be coming back to do their presentation and get their program underway. Because I think our kids do need a line to success and to teach them the things that they never heard about. So, that's pretty much it for me. Everybody have a happy and safe Fourth of July. Again, congratulations, um, trustee McFadden on your son Arthur and his, um, wonderful thing that he's getting ready to go into Japan. So, I just hope everybody has a good time and thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
One question. Trustee Williams, uh, I had a resident wanted to know about the, I think something we had said before that July is the end of testing. Some type, some type of time.
July seventh is supposed to be the end of all the testing. Right now, you know, was the last sign up was March seventh. But the testing is still going on. So, this gentleman called me today. He got his testing results back and he's not compliant. And I think he lives close over there by you. And he says, um, so what am I supposed to do? Because from what I understood, they're supposed to deliver the water to those people who are not compliant. They're supposed to give them water until the pipe gets removed. And he said, I, I'm, I'm not getting any action, no boots on the ground, no one is hearing me. So, that's why I'm trying to call.
Oh, again, just the other one, to know how many people have had the, um, pipe replaced or have been, has qualified.
They won't give me that. They said they will give me the total care count after that deadline in July. They are not gonna get ready to give me any numbers as to how many pipes were done, any of that. I talked to a lady Barbara over there at the I E P A, and she's in charge of that and told me and she told Kim, we will give you that information once the program is over and not before. So, she don't wanna just, oh, it's twelve people and it really ends up being fifty. So, she's gonna need to mean that.
Trustee Thompson?
Good evening, residents. Board and mayor, we're there. I wanna say thank you to all the residents who are paying attention to the people. To the people, um, and decisions being made on their behalf. Um, it bothers me though, that people think that we are divided. I don't think we're so divided. I think we have different opinions and some of us have many questions. And I don't think anything is wrong with that. And I think that a healthy com- a healthy discussion about, um, what needs to be done is important. And I'm asking the neighbors, um, residents, talk to your neighbors and, um, friends in the community and allow them to have their own opinion as you have your own. Um, everybody has the right to ask questions. Uh, NYTT, um, Mentoring Youth through Technology still wants to work with young people in our community. Also, the Illinois Black History Museum would still like to come and bring, um, African-American history exhibits. And, um, since we couldn't come to a consensus, I told them to review our schedule and we will catch up with them later. Um, because they are busy in other communities. And we want our children and young people and regular people and everybody to be able to, um, participate. Um, hey, you should be getting your summer newsletter from the library in the day now. And the Mini Reveni this year, that's the concert we have outside on the lawn, is gonna be a white park. So, I can't tell you the exact date, but when I do, I'll give it to the village manager as well for everybody. Also, the library is a cooling center. So important to be, um, you know, to be careful about, um, walking around in this heat. So, you can go to the library, it's open from ten AM to eight PM, Monday through Thursday, and ten AM to, um, five PM Friday and Saturday. And then, everybody be safe, um, on the Fourth of July.
Good day trustee. Thank you so much trustee Thompson. Trustee Lewis?
Uh, good evening, board, mayor, residents, trustee. I wanna say we attended the SSMA, um, gala and it was nice to see all of us sitting together like a family reunion. Also, we attended the June tenth celebration at Wing Creek Casino. And at that time, we had a chance to talk to one of the re- uh, a representative, the mayor and I. And, uh, well, he, we talked to him before. And he looked at our numbers for the ICC, said, how can we complain about the water if we don't put our information in to get the numbers out for our complaints? He, uh, stated, he's like, you all need to have a drive for the ICC complaints, because our numbers are very low. It was under a hundred, wasn't a lot. And we all complained about our bills. And if we don't say, if we don't use our voices for the utility bill, especially the Aqua water, we got like fifteen different charges on there that we trying to see what's going on. If we don't raise our voices and raise concern, like all of us on this board said, we're, we're still in the fight. We need you as the residents to fill out the ICC complaint forms. They are at village hall. If you, if you can't make it to village hall, let us know, we'll drop some off in the neighborhood. Every trustee lives in a different area. We can get to the residents to fill those papers out. It is important. If we want our bills to go down, it is important to fill that out. So, I'm asking all the residents, fill out the complaint form. And I just wanna say have a happy and safe summer. And you can do it online. You could do it if you're not computer savvy, come up to village hall or we'll drop the forms out to you. I wanna say Trey, um, have a great time in Tokyo and find me a little boo boo. I need a couple of boo boos. Um, have a safe and happy summer, uh, University Park.
All right, thank you so much trustee Lewis. Uh, Ms. Jenkins, I haven't forgotten you.
Hey, kids. The Comcast, um, project, I know I've been coming up here a few times, pretty much mentioning the same project, but it has been a chore to get these things, um, taken care of, actually moving the cable station from five oh five University Parkway to forty four Town Center. So, there were a bunch of steps and I was a novice, so I was learning as I went along. But, uh, some of the highlights are the fiber line for Comcast has been completed and moved as of May the twenty first. Um, we, uh, will be updating our transmitter, which will transmit the information from the cable station, um, from the, to the head end that puts, pushes the information out to channel four. We're gonna update that to be more compatible, um, with the equipment that we have already delivered and installed, so that we don't have any hiccups later on down the line. Um, the, um, also, the village newsletter is, um, actually, as, uh, village manager mentioned, it is going to be completed and, um, sent out, uh, within the next week. And, uh, we're just tweaking a few more things and then once she approves it, then we'll be moving forward with that. I attended the, uh, a municipal marketing meeting. Um, it is a quarterly meeting that I attend, um, virtually pretty much with some of the other communities such as Bowling Brook, Romeoville, Lyle. And, um, we all get on that Garland Mays, actually for Will County, he's on that meeting as well. And we, what we do is we, uh, have a conversation about some of the resources and the things that we use, um, tools that we use for marketing. Uh, some of the ideas that shared were, uh, about marketing conferences that we might, uh, future could attend, how successful those events were. Chatbots, I don't know if you all are familiar with chatbots, but that's the new, um, thing that's starting to come up is more chatbots. Um, social media, um, archiving costs, um, and policies on that. Cloud-based storage and the pros and cons of certain website providers. Um, I also, um, am, an ongoing project that I've mentioned is the website revision. The front page looks really nice, it's very fresh. Um, it holds a lot of information on the front page, more organized, um, from side navigation to top navigation, um, based on the fact that, um, some of the residential complaints, staff complaints, uh, about trying to find information. So, it, it also holds more news briefs and more calendars. Um, the website has been developed in alignment, um, and the final design has been approved. The design has a cleaner, fresher look, as I mentioned. Uh, the next step is the content migration, to move the existing information over to the new site. And then a small training, because I'm pretty familiar with Revive. Um, the website will work with our, if I haven't mentioned it, our phone app. So, we'll have an app on our phone. And, um, that app will mirror an abbreviated form of the website. So, things, the emergency things that come up, we'll be able to access that from the app on our phone. And then finally, um, with village manager Scott, I attended the Career and Internship Fair. Um, at this event, we met with Christina Gray, an employer relations internship specialist at Career Services. And as village manager mentioned, we were introduced to information for the Illinois Cooperative Work Study Grant, which will provide us with a GSU student, um, quarterly if necessary, whatever she uses. um, quarterly, if necessary, whatever she uses, um, will be need or need the internship intern for. And then we can be reimbursed. Last two things, um, we have a new sign at the University Park Golf Club. It's a new electronic sign. Um, I am able to access that sign remotely. I think it's a nice fresh addition, um, to that area. The turnoff, I think it looks really, really nice. And, um, it's pretty simple to, uh, to use. And then the last thing is that, um, LaHeep, um, contacted us on Friday of last week to let us know that the funds have been exhausted for this time period until October first of twenty twenty five. Which means that we will not be having any more outreach for LaHeep on Tuesdays, starting at nine AM at this location. But there will be a scheduled time still for Catholic charity to come as well. And that's all.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
You had a question for me?
I didn't have a question.
I, I just had a question. With the, um, migration, will it be able to bring over all the old, um, minute board meetings? All that information because all we can see now is from twenty nineteen. I would like to go back and see all the old.
So for twenty nineteen, if you go on the agenda page on the left-hand side, there's a, a, a line there that says archive agendas. And so you click that, it clicked into the agendas that was with before, um, I started working on the website with Civic Plus. If you click there, those agendas will come up on the left-hand side prior to two thousand and nineteen, as you mentioned.
But it won't be, um,
No, no.
Grouped together by year.
Um, you know what? I'll ask. Can we get the two thousand and nineteen from Civic Plus put on to the new site?
I mean, I'm talking about before two thousand and nineteen, twenty nineteen.
It's there now, but, but you have a valid point that it should be on the one page with everyone. So, yeah.
So we can, each year, all of those board meetings, each one of those P V C is twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, all of the ones that was there before.
Yes.
I, I'd be delighted.
Thank you for that. I definitely will add that to the list for the migration.
All right. Trustee Lewis.
I want to say thank you to the mayor, Gina Williams, Sonya Jenkins, village manager, Niva, Chief Mitchell, Chris Vargas, who jumped into action when we had the breach of the water. You guys came out on your Sunday, which is the Lord's Day. And you all, and Chief, Brian Chief, you all rocked and rolled and did your thing. I want to say I appreciate you all for coming and making sure at the very last minute, we were in that village hall over here rocking and rolling. I want to say thank you all for doing that because that's a Sunday and, you know, people don't appreciate you. So I want to give y'all y'all flowers today, okay? Because you all jumped into action like Action Jackson. I want to say thank you, okay? Thank you, good people.
Thank you so much, uh, trustee Lewis. Madam Clerk. You have no comments? Well, I, I'll make a few brief comments and I'll make it real, real quick. I'm going to be the first one to invite all of the residents of University Park to our annual town hall meeting, which is going to be July fifth, two thousand and twenty five, here at the Ninety Town Center, ten AM to twelve noon. It's a great opportunity to meet some of your newly elected officials, re-elected officials, meet the board of trustees, some of our department heads. And you can get some factual information that's really going to be exciting on the progress that your community is really making here in University Park. So I encourage you, take a few minutes out of your time. Come on out July fifth, right here at Ninety Town Center. And let's just talk about some things, have a good conversation with our residents. And that, one, one more thing, and I'm kind of hesitant to do this because I really don't do this too much. But I'm going to take a note from trustee Brooks on this one tonight. I'm going to say I was really, really fortunate and really surprised most recently. I had an opportunity to, uh, be a nominee and honorary at Chicago, for the Chicago Defender, which is a, a man of honor in twenty twenty five. Trustee Brooks, you were there, right? Yep. So it was really kind of unique and I felt that was, you know, I don't know what to think of it because I'm not used to, you know, talking about the things that I do. I just do the stuff because I'm passionate about the community that we serve in and I see that there's an opportunity and hope along the line. But this is just a little something I just want to share and this is what I got. Says, Mayor Rudess, the time is almost here to celebrate the remarkable individual you are as epitome of excellence in the African-American community. For the past eighteen years, the Chicago Defender has been privileged to honor local men who stand as beacons of inspiration, demonstrating visionary leadership, outstanding achievements and a commitment to community service. My nomination was dedicated by the readership of the Defender is a testament to your outstanding contributions as a businessman, community activist, philanthropist and entrepreneur from a pool of hundreds of nominees. You emerged as the chosen few who would join this theme ranks of Chicagoland's most influential men. So I was really proud to receive that award and thank you for those who acknowledge that. Thank you for those who had the opportunity to attend with me. It was a honor I didn't expect. So when God has something for us, it's no denying of it. And with that, I'd just like to make a motion to close out. But we ask you guys to be conscientious of these fireworks because just, not just, you know, everybody likes them, but our veterans are really, really harmed by the fireworks and it could take them to a place that they don't need to go back into. So enjoy your Fourth of July. Be safe out there. God bless. And I have a motion to adjourn. Moved by Brooks, second by Lewis. All the favor? All right.